Twenty-six. We have a quorum. Ms. Humphries will be a little late, she has a doctor's appointment. Mr. Benning, I guess he will show up. So we'll proceed on. For Thursday, we're looking at. Willcock, Ms. Adams, Justin McPeak is the infocation from Thunder Mountain Church. We have a pledge of allegiance by Councilwoman Landry. First item by Minister Benning, and then we'll go to our senior managers report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just a couple things, as I mentioned last time, there has been a ruling by Judge Brain in the Gila River adjudication, so again, we're waiting for our attorney's opinions on what we should do next with that and what it all means, so when we get that, we'll either set up a meeting or somehow let the council know, you know, what's going on with that. Initially, it doesn't look like it's a bad ruling for us, but it still will have some implications, you know, that we may have to deal with in the future. Second, receipt of a letter that was made aware to me by Tony Davis, who's the environmental reporter for the Arizona Daily Star, indicating that Dr. Silver was asking the Arizona Department of Water Resources to declare our area an active management area, so I had a discussion with him with regards to that, continuing to voice our opposition to that occurring here, and made some comments, so those were in the Star this last weekend, if you cared to look at them and see what I said. So I've had a long relationship with Mr. Davis through the years on environmental issues, so anyway, you know, so things are still happening out there in the water world, and I don't think I have anything else at the moment, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, thank you, sir.
I'm sure I will by Thursday, though.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Proceed on public hearing. Item number three, 2023-073, the program year review of the community development block grant consolidation annual performance. Staff report, Mr. McLaughlin.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, so the CAPR just documents the state's progress in expending community development block grant funds during the last program year, which coincides with the fiscal year ending June 30th. During the program year, the city awarded a total of $173,636.12 in CDBG funds. This included completing the parking lot expansion at St. Vincent de Paul, the kitchen remodel project at Good Neighbor Alliance Emergency Shelter, carrying out emergency home repairs benefiting seven low-income homeowners, and a range of relief distributed by Nightway Sierra Vista in Cochise County through the Emergency Crisis Fund. We also spent a small amount on administration to cover our costs associated with legal ads and environmental reviews. The contract for the slide at Soldier Creek Park, which was in last year's annual action plan, has been awarded and is proceeding towards construction and will be included in next year's CAPR. So the report includes demographic information on the beneficiaries from the services provided and other material to address HUD requirements. Your approval on Thursday will authorize staff to proceed to submit the CAPR to HUD for their acceptance and reviews.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Any questions, comments? Yes, sir.
Do we ever go back and check the status of these projects and what exactly happened, what was supposed to happen versus what did happen, and kind of look at that to say, we either missed the mark or we'd expect them maybe to ask for more funds next year because they didn't really get what they needed? Does that happen ever?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Rodriguez, with respect to our sub-recipient agreements with nonprofit agencies, there are performance reports that are provided monthly to document the expenditure, how the funds are being used, and who is benefiting from those funds. Of course, there are always needs that are greater than what we could provide through the Community Development Block Grant Program, and there's an opportunity every year for those same agencies to submit for additional funding.
Okay. Reason I asked, I went to the GNA to see what they're, what it got, and it basically got a countertop. It's, I mean, I get it, there's, you know, things are expensive right now and there's inflation, but it's kind of looked like, wow, that's all, missed something.
There were new cabinets as well. We replaced the cabinets and installed new countertops, couldn't cover the dishwasher and the pantry.
Yeah, the pantry, yeah. I guess the bigger, I think, is the pantry, but I guess I just, I would assume, like, you know, for instance, we get, if we do happen to get more money next year, they could reapply and something like that.
They could, but remember, we awarded what they requested, and so we relied on their cost estimate, and, you know, we did our best to find a contractor to take that job, and what we accomplished was what we could afford through the budget that was given.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you, sir. We'll move to the discussion of Action of Ordinance 2023-009, codification of Code of Ordinance. Staff report, Ms. Adams.
Mayor McCaw, members of council, this is the final step in the codification process, which basically just means that we are making all the ordinances that were passed by the City Council between July 14th, 2022, and August 10th, 2023 into the permanent record of the City of Sierra Vista. If approved on Thursday night after 30 days, this ordinance will go into effect and we will be done.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions, comments? Thank you, ma'am. We'll go to the discussion possible, Action of Approval Resolution 2023-074, intergovernmental agreement with Cochise County Community College for EMS and Fire Services. Staff report, Chief Jones.
Member called, members of council, thank you very much. This resolution is for an intergovernmental agreement between Service of Fire Medical and Cochise College. It's a partnership that the Fire Department and Medical Services and Cochise College is doing to expedite a fire academy within a two-month period. Normally, the Fire Service Fire One and Two certification takes a year long. Working with the college, we have found a way to get it done within two months, and through the process and through the, through the program, our cadets or recruits will have the ability to have the knowledge and techniques to take the Fire Service One and Two tests, their wildland tests, as well as their hazmat tests, and be certified by year's end, which means we'll be able to put them online and in service by probably January, end of January, February timeframe, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Is there any Fire Service Academy? Yes, sir.
Oh, I was gonna say, how many, how many people are we looking at right now that we know that we have in the, in the academy? It doesn't mean they're gonna come to our city, but it just...
Member called, Mr. Rodriguez, we have eight people that have signed up to go through already. Through the process of the application process, we had 16 applicants, we interviewed 12, and we decided on eight, and eight have said they will go through the academy starting October 23rd.
And they're coming, those eight are coming to?
They're here, they're, they all live in Sierra Vista already.
Okay, all right. Is it gonna, in the future, is it gonna be open up to other counties or?
Member called, great question. The college is hoping that this will spawn off into allowing other agencies, this is specific to us because we really need it right now, we have the bandwidth and the personnel to go through it, but hopefully in the future, this will be a once-a-year project where maybe the city puts into, Frye puts into, Wilcock puts into, Tombstone puts in once, to make it a county-wide approach to keep people here.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we, did we do a call to the public and comments? So we go to item number Bravo, in discussion of special events, close sponsorship and fee reduction program. Ma'am?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm always excited to come and talk to you about the good things that the department is doing and what we've been up to, and you guys gave me a great assignment this time on special events, and what we'll be doing is, I'll give you a brief overview of what kinds of special events we do now, what our staffing levels look like, we can have a discussion, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but just so that the mayor and council has a good understanding of what it takes to do a special event, what we do in-house, and kind of how we work with our partners outside. You also gave me the wonderful tasking of figuring out how to have a hummingbird festival, and I will share with you what I've learned about that process, and I'll make a recommendation, and you can let me know if I'm on the right track or I'm off the rails and I gotta get back on. And then we'll talk about also a special event policy when it comes to fee reductions and waiver requests, which I know that I receive several during the year. We have a lot of amazing organizations that want to be active in the community, and they're trying to figure out how to get a fee waiver or a break on fees when they come to the city, and so kind of creating a program around that that kind of has your oversight on it, I think will be helpful for all of you who get these requests, and also just to kind of guide people on what the expectations are and who we can and who we can't work with and how we can and how we can. So to start off, it's important to know what we're already doing. So within my department, we work with several other departments, too, so special events don't just impact my department, the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Library, but we work with our partner departments also. Public Works is heavily involved in some areas of that, and then our marketing and public affairs side also has a big role to play in it. Right now, we conduct, these is our signature special events that we host as the city, so in April, we have our West Fest, Wine Beer and Spirits Festival in May, which is running concurrently with our Summit Challenge. The Hummingbird Triathlon is in August, remember that, that's important. Oktoberfest runs in September, we're gearing up for our Veterans Day Parade now, which will be held in November, and then we have our annual tree lighting and holiday market in December, and we host ice skating in the park in December, but there's nothing to do here.
And one thing, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, when you look at that list, that's kind of a list that we also budget for, it appears in your budget book, and Laura's great at monetizing and trying to recoup costs and some of those, but it's not always expected that we will recoup all the costs with those, so, but you guys get a look at that first before, before they go. Go ahead.
Thank you. We also work with some partners in the community now, and these are the ones that we're currently working with. We are great partners with our Rotary, who does an amazing job at leading the annual Fourth of July celebration. The Thunderbolt Youth Triathlon with Bolt Multi-Sport is in October. Vineyards in the Park, that's a partnership with the Wachukah Art Association, so nothing goes better with art in the park than wine in the park, ask anyone. Our annual Halloween event, that is run by strictly volunteers, the city's part in that is we provide the liability for that, and we also provide the park. If for some reason they stopped running that, we would have to step in and run that, it's a massive event that's free and open to the public. And then we work with our wonderful partners at the Sierra Vista Chamber of Commerce on the Christmas Parade, which runs concurrently with our annual tree lighting and holiday So we also have a lot of other smaller format events, which are outreach and programming that we do that are separate and apart just from what goes on in our regular buildings, so we believe that outreach and community engagement is very important. If we lose touch with our, with our public, what good are we? So we, our staff does a great job at making sure that we're out and about. Our tsunami nights and our bash nights at the Cove have been very popular, they are, we're reaching building capacity now on those almost every single time. 700 kids in the, in the Cove, a large body of water, what could be more terrifying? Dive-in movies at, at the Cove, we have that, the Cove actually hosts that, and then we also work with our sister divisions, so sometimes you'll see, like with Jurassic Wonders, we had at the museum, they actually hosted a dive-in movie that was dinosaur-themed. We've had library services come in, and I think they did like a Jaws or a Meg one time, and then they were, they had all their library books that were shark-themed during like the Shark Week time. It's just another way to engage in a different way with our community and get people out and interactive and learning about all the great things that we do. We have our rec-enroll program, which is quarterly or more, which we kind of go and do a small format, like lawn family-type games throughout the community, which introduces people to different parks in our park system. It's free and open to the public, all staff-led. We have our bazaars, we have Christmas in July, our Spring Bazaar, and our Yuletide, Market and Holiday Bazaar. We do several trips and excursions, we just went to a Diamondbacks game, we hit up the Gaslight Theater. This list is not, like, extensive, like, I know, I heard that, too. So this isn't an exhaustive list of everything we do, but just a sampling, and then like an egregious plug for Desk with the Dead that's coming up also. So kind of some things that go into the planning of special events that a lot of people aren't aware of is that large events begin and require coordination eight to 12 months out, sometimes longer, depending on if it's something new, and that, because, because of that, we have to, sorry, because of that, we have to secure our vendors, our craft vendors, our food, wineries, and beer, because they, a lot of times, book out their calendar for an entire year, so the faster we can get people on board, we have a great sampling of things for folks. Ordering supplies, securing contracts and permits, we have to get our alcohol license from the state, all of that, I have to make Jill happy, she's gotta have her insurance, she's always on us for insurance, and coordinating the logistics of everything, working with other departments, going through the special event permitting process, even when we do a special event here, we follow the same rules that we would expect any outside organization, and that takes a lot of coordination. So our smaller events and programming takes about four to six months of planning, and just kind of remember also, we have to meet the deadlines of PIO and marketing, our vises have deadlines, so we have to forecast out very far to make sure that we hit those deadlines so that it shows up in everybody's mailbox. So in order to run special events, depending on what it is, it takes between 20 and 50 staff members to run those. We also utilize volunteers, we have done a really good job of shrinking down our staff footprint in our events. An example of that is Oktoberfest, we used to do a lot of the food for that, which took a lot of prep work, and, you know, people sitting at a table and cutting brooch in half. We gave all the food away to our nonprofits and partners, Sister Cities now does all of the bratwurst, for example, you have an agreement with the Sister Cities Association, they can fundraise through that partnership agreement, they don't pay to be there, they actually use that, that festival to make money that is then reinvested into the students that they're working with. It's a wonderful partnership, but it does take a lot of staff to run a special event. We set up and staged several days prior to the event. Oktoberfest, we start setting up for that a week prior, the Fun Fest starts right after we tear down, it's like one goes up, comes down, the other one's going up. Right now is the perfect time to pay attention, kind of, to what's going on on our part, because we have large-scale events every weekend right now, this is our event season, and so you just see things kind of showing up and leaving all the time. And then what's bizarre about that is, it's like it never happened in one to three days, it's just gone. The staff tore down Oktoberfest, everything but the, the tent and the tables were gone by two o'clock in the morning Sunday. So who runs our special events? We have a large special event staff of one person, we have one special event coordinator for the city, and that is currently vacant. And so right now, Laura Kilburg has stepped in, she is the manager on the Parks and Recreation side of the house and used to be the special event supervisor for the city, so luckily she kind of knows what's going on, and she stays in very close contact with our special events coordinator. We've had turnover in that. Leslie Bryant went and took another job locally, which is great, but it left a big gap to fill. So right before special event season, here we are, and we did a great job, nobody noticed. And it was, but we do not have a special event staff, it, it does not exist. The coordinator of special events, their responsibilities include coordinating all city special events and shepherding folks through the special event process, so when somebody comes to us and they want to have a special event, they have almost like a wedding planner at their side, they're, you know, we take them out to different venues, we talk about what's available in the area, whether it's in our inventory or some, something off-site, and because we want to harness all the special events that, that we can here in our area. They also have to coordinate the staffing with other departments and divisions, so for instance, if we have a parade, Sharon's staff takes that. So for instance, if we have a parade, share and staff takes that on, and they close all those streets in preparation for the parade. So there's, you know, we talk to police and fire about, you know, how they can get to somebody in case of an emergency. Our police department guys, you know, have to shut down streets at every light. So there's a lot of discussion and coordination that takes place within that process. Now, the staffing, we don't have 50 people in special events to do that. So the staff at your special events are your lifeguards, your librarians, your museum curator, your adult programming folks. It's our general labor workers. We have parks maintenance folks that are pouring beer at Oktoberfest. It's all done in-house. And because of that, when we have a special event, I have to shut down other buildings in the city to, in order to do that. So every time we are doing something, we are giving up revenue in another area, and it must be planned out. Right now, for example, August is our biggest turnover month in the department, because we hire a lot of part-time staff. Currently, our staffing level is sitting at 94, which is very low. But we're coming out of that big season where people are going back to college, they're re-entering school. So we're having that turnover of normally our younger part-time staff that really are very important in running special events. And a special event, especially in August, which I'm going to get to in a minute, it's hitting that specific timeframe as well. You see that, that is why we change our hours to the Cove, why we are looking at possibly changing them again. It's just due to the staffing levels, especially in that lifeguard area, it hits us pretty hard. Our lifeguards do anything. They're like puppies. You can just set them out and they'll do anything you ask and do a great job. So we're currently evaluating our staffing needs, especially in the special events area, because it is getting so popular. We are inundated with requests. It's a great problem to have, but I would ask for patience as we plan on how to support those activities without having to give up other successful things that are already going on. And out of those 94, you might be surprised to know that 46 of those are full-time, the rest of my staff is part-time. So that leaves us to the hummingbird festival. Yes. So the first thing I wanted to do is look at why we would want to have a hummingbird festival. What is the purpose of it? What would our objectives be? You have to know why you're doing something in order to get to the place of where the activity makes sense and gives you the results that you're really looking for. So we want to raise awareness that we are the hummingbird capital of the universe. That is what we want to do. And we want to make sure that we're not hurting other organizations that are already doing the work, that are providing, you know, that are already investing in making sure that our environment is protected, that continues to attract these beautiful birds into our community. Their work, they do a lot of educating the public on what that is, and there's already so many great things that are happening with these organizations. We also want to promote tourism. We want people to come to our community. And while they think they're here just about the hummingbirds, they're going to be introduced to a lot of other things. We want them to get to know us. We want to stimulate the local economy, look to foster community engagement, and we want to celebrate our region's natural beauty and wildlife. So while we were looking at how we could do that, we met with our local stakeholders. I attended the 2023 Southwest Wings Gala. The mayor was there. It was my birthday. It was a good time. We learned all about, everything you'd ever want to know about blackbirds. We looked at the feasibility as August as the month for such an event. And we learned through this research that August is the peak hummingbird migration time for Sierra Vista and that we attract 13 species of hummingbirds here, which is more than any other place in the world. So, which, you know, the hummingbirds are still out at my place. They've been there since August. I did pay attention.
We also found out September 2nd is National Hummingbird Day.
September 2nd is National Hummingbird Day. Who knew? We're already learning so much about hummingbirds. We also realized like just how many activities are really going on in the community surrounding hummingbirds already. And we really took note about how we could enhance that instead of take its place somehow. I also went to my staff, who are the best people, to ask about things and who just peppered me with ideas on all the cool things that we could do around hummingbird education. So what we found out also is that to have a large outdoor event, there is a reason why there are no large outdoor events really to speak of in August. It's because of the monsoon rains and not knowing when they're coming, and it's the hottest month of the year. But it is an ideal month for a hummingbird celebration due to the fact that that's the peak migration system, the peak migration time in the year. So staffing a large August event is very difficult due to our, what I just told you about before, where I'm losing most of my staff. The Cove is in recovery period. We're messing with the hours there. We just, it's a weird time for my department. We're also staffing other large summertime activities during that time in the evenings, such as concerts in the park. We do our movies in the park that Cox Communications sponsors for us, and we're ramping up for Oktoberfest in September. Another consideration is a capital outlay for a large-scale event is $50,000. That is our budget every year for Oktoberfest. And what's interesting about the Oktoberfest budget and how that is broken down, just something to keep in mind, the tents and tables and chairs alone for Oktoberfest is $19,000 to rent them. So there are a ton of potential partners, and I met some beautiful people through this research. One is through the Madrian Archipelago Wildlife Center. I met with Kate Scott from there, who is their director. And they are 100% volunteer wildlife advocacy and conservation organization. They do a lot of things with videos on birding and things like that. Southwest Wings, Mary and Chris from Southwest Wings are lovely. They have their spring fling and summer festival in May and August. The Southeastern Arizona Birding Observatory, or SABO, they are nonprofit dedicated to the conservation of the birds of southeastern Arizona, their habitats and the diversity of species that share those habitats through research, monitoring and public education. The San Pedro House does hummingbird banding at Casa de San Pedro Ben Breakfast with SABO. And they also give out tips for hot birding spots in our community. And then the Nature Conservancy at the Ramsey Canyon Preserve does a lot. They actually have a live hummingbird cam on their website, and you can just sit there and stream the hummingbirds all day long, to your heart's content. These are all great potential partners for us. And so taking all of that into consideration, my recommendation to the mayor and council is to consider proclaiming the month of August as Hummingbird Month, Hummingbird Celebration Month, and we do this annually. Create partnerships to create not just one event, but a robust calendar of activities that we could partner with. Maybe create a trip that would take people out to hummingbird banding. August activities could also incorporate local businesses through Tony's Group and Economic Development. Maybe they have, you know, hummingbird specials. Creating a month surrounding this would also give way to marketing possibilities for people who are participating in the month-long activities. We could have shared advertising and activity calendars for such a thing. And then programming hummingbird-themed activities throughout the department. For example, again, these are just ideas. They can be expanded upon or thrown out, but some of the things that staff was throwing up is what you see here, like library storytimes and programs, day trips to birding activities, joining already planned activities with other organization, creating hummingbird-themed art and crafts in our art studio, museum displays, guest lectures, you know, having hummingbird feeders in the library garden, maybe doing something through, you know, some commissions where they're doing something, encouraging businesses to put out hummingbird feeders during the month of August, getting the whole community involved instead of just having a hummingbird-themed Oktoberfest. A concert series is something, I'm really sad that the mayor, Pro Tem, is not here, because she gave her vision of actually having something hummingbird-themed or a hummingbird movie like as a backdrop behind like the symphony orchestra in the park. You know, we already have our summer concert series. There are ways to incorporate that. So that's my recommendation. But this is your time to tell me what you guys think, and if I'm on the right track, or what do you think?
I think the month is great. Look forward to that. I think the activities are just spot-on. I know that Mayor Pro Tem and I was talking, and I think the concert series with the overdrop would be just ideal, perfect as the culmination of the events. Yeah, I think you're on the right track. Other comments?
Yeah, I like the ideas of obviously, you never want to reinvent the wheel. But there's organizations already doing things, definitely partnering with them, and getting as much as we can out there to spread the word, to help our tourism-wise things, which anything we can do for that helps, obviously. So I think those are great ideas. I do have a quick question about the tables and chairs when you mentioned that. Has it always been that we just, we don't use them enough to buy them, to where we just rent them all the time instead of buying them that were, that were not ours? What's the history of that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Rodriguez. It's the quantity. It's the quantity along with other things going on, and it's outdoor use. So the wear and tear and moving that quantity of tables and chairs is a Herculean effort. We could always purchase tables and chairs to do that, and then we would also need the storage and the staffing to move it. So it is more cost beneficial, in my opinion, to rent something like that. They're designed for that, and it's, replacement costs and maintenance and storage are really the most major issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good question. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much for sharing this with us and kind of going over how the planning for all these events and stuff. Like I've participated in a few events over the years, and it's really, really cool to see how there's so many people that are there super early in the morning, like the days before, leading up to make everything, everything happen, the day of, there's people, and then afterwards, like after the hummingbird triathlon, hanging out, and we could see everybody putting things away really quickly, like they had a really good process going. So that was really great to see that, and just to kind of see behind the scenes and how all that works. And I really appreciate the research that went into finding out more about how, about bringing hummingbird celebration into our city, since we have so many, so many different hummingbirds that come, and it's, that's really great. And to find the people and the groups that are already doing things, as was mentioned before, if things are already happening, it's great to kind of partner with them. And I think that also, it also shares with the community what those groups are doing that maybe they were not aware of before. So I think that everybody wins there, and I really love the recommendation for having a month-long celebration and to bring in all the different departments and all the different people together to have that happen. I think that's really, really, really cool.
Thank you. The best part about this that I didn't mention in the slides is that all of the ideas that I gave there, I could do with our existing budget. So just incorporating those, we've gotten really good over the past few years at coordinating things throughout the department and coordinating the theming, and that's gone really, that's been very successful for us. And we've been able to do it with keeping our costs down, but also providing extremely high-quality services. So that's good. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I mean, putting together a budget for this is just one part of the equation, because the other part is how Laura might be able to come up with cost recovery or monetizing certain things within that event. So we're not just putting money out there, but hopefully getting revenue back in return so that we can at least break even on these things.
Absolutely. Okay, we're ready to go to the next one?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Did you see? It flew away.
Nice.
I was very proud of that. Too proud. The next thing we're going to talk about is the special event co-sponsorship and fee waiver reduction program. This is something that I know Chuck has talked about and you guys have talked about in work sessions of the past. And this is when we get those requests by organizations on fee waivers and what we can or can't do. So this program, you have a draft form, it should be in your packet, defines the eligibility for consideration and ensures compliance with our Arizona Gift Clause. Anytime we, as a government agency, are giving something of value without receiving anything in return, that's what constitutes a violation of that, and we'll talk a little bit about that as well. This will talk about what the process will be in that and how it will come through, the expectations from our end-users as well on response times and things like that. So this talks about eligibility. Nonprofit or community service organizations must be based within the city of Sierra Vista. They must be in good standing with us. The event that they're proposing or the program must be free and open to the public. That also includes like entry fees to that. If they're monetizing their participation, that then would constitute that violation. It must be for a public purpose, and it must be free. It must assist with tourism, sports tourism, economic development, recreational and/or strategic plan goals. And it must not have a religious or political purpose. However, and I should have put religious and political, organizations may be considered if the event neither promotes religious messages nor advocates for or promotes religious or political beliefs. And it must not be for the purpose of enhancing a business. So a business just can't go there to create a pop-up shop for themselves, for example, in our large park for the day. So Article 9, Section 7 of the Arizona Constitution is commonly referred to as the Arizona Gift Clause. You can look it up, but I kind of just told you what it was. The Arizona Supreme Court actually has set up a two-prong test that you can test just about anything to see if there's a violation. It just says that any expenditure which includes a fee waiver that has monetary value must have a public purpose, and whatever we receive back must not be disproportionate. So the benefits to the city could be greater, but it has to be sort of in line, not dollar for dollar, but there has to be some type of benefit back to the city. Nathan did review this. We did have legal review on this to make sure that there were no violations in this So the applicants, basically what they would do is fill out a special event packet, they would provide all the requirements and backup documentation that's required in the program documents, and request the type of waiver or consideration that they need. If it would then come to me, I would make sure that it meets all those requirements. And if it does, and if it makes sense for the city, they will receive an approval. If it does not, they will receive a denial within two weeks. That is pretty much it. You guys have the full draft document within your packet, and I'm open to your questions, comments or recommendations.
Questions, comments?
Am I on the right track with it?
Down the right track?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is Transit Six Month Update.
There we go. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As noted, this is a six-month update. I last talked to you in March when we were looking at the pilot program to go
There we go. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As noted, this is a six-month update. I last talked to you in March when we were looking at the pilot program to go fare free, talked about some other items as well. So I'm here to give you an update on how things are looking at Vista Transit. I'll give you a preview that generally I have some good news to share with you. So here's what I'm going to be talking about today, just an update on the staffing situation, some of the ridership trends we're seeing, impacts of route changes, the fare free program, and also some future considerations for Vista Transit. So just a quick update on the staffing, we are better than we were six months ago. I can't say things are great yet, but we are looking better. I think last time I talked to you, we were sitting at about 25% staffing. So now we are up to about 50%. So we're on the right trajectory. We have been able to fill some key positions. So admin staff at Vista Transit, we currently have three. Included in that is a front desk position that we added in. Existing staff thought it was important to have someone available to field those phone calls. That was all the more important due to the next bullet, which is our transit specialist is still having to drive the routes fairly frequently. We would like to get him off the routes as soon as possible, but until we can get some additional stability, we haven't been able to do that consistently. We do have more drivers right now, but the issue is, you know, people get sick, people want to take vacations. And so when that happens, we sometimes need him to fill in and he's been great about doing that. So full-time drivers, this is where we've had the most success. We currently have six full-time drivers, fully staffed would be eight, but we've made some good progress there. And as I noted, half of these drivers are new within the last year. Part-time drivers, a little bit less success here and we have two fully staffed would be six. Both of those drivers are new within the last year. I will note that filling part-time positions is a challenge, not just across public works, but the city organization as a whole. We've speculated on the reasons for that. We think part of it is a demographic shift, but I can tell you across the city organization, we are struggling to fill those five, those part-time positions. And when we do get a fill, it tends to be more on the shorter term. We don't have long time part-term, part-timers like we used to. So we are continuing to advertise for part-time drivers right now. That position is active on the city's website. The full-time position is not currently posted because we are reviewing some applicants and scheduling interviews. So we're hoping, hoping we got some good applicants and we might be able to say that we are fully staffed in full-time positions soon. I think we're a ways away in part-timers yet, but those positions are very important to my department as they are to Laura's because the advantage of the part-timers is they fill some of those gaps more easily. If you need someone for two hours because a full-timer has a doctor's appointment, that's where a part-timer ends up being really valuable versus having another full-time position. So we are going to continue to advertise. If anyone listening knows someone who's interested in part-time, Vista Transit would love to have them. And I did note staffing is improved, but our margins are still really small. We run tight, you know, illness is just the way it is and we're thankful we don't have to have employees coming sick. We don't want them to come in sick. We want people to be able to take personal time for themselves. But when we have people out, it really does create a strain and we need our specialists to step in and that's a situation that we would like to continue to minimize. So ridership trends, this appears in your executive report every two months. So you see this come through. This is the most recent one that's in this month's executive report. So probably the biggest thing to note from this is fare free went into effect on March first. And so you see that big jump in fiscal year 2023 between February and March. We about doubled ridership between those two months. And you always ask the question, well, is that just a factor of maybe the time of year? Do we normally see that kind of uptick? And you can see in fiscal year 22, yes, we did have a similar uptick, but not as much in fiscal year 22. I also went and looked back at fiscal year 21 and that one was even more modest. So in 2023, that increase month to month was 3,000 riders. In fiscal year 21, it was only 800. So that is a real increase we are seeing in fiscal year 23. Little bit more about the ridership trends. As I noted, between February and March, ridership doubled. It has remained above the previous fiscal years for all except April 2023. You see that here. We had a little bit of a dip there in April. We don't really know why, but then in May it crossed back over 2022 and you look into what it's done the first two months of this fiscal year, we're seeing a great trend there. Some stops, we've had very dramatic increases. Fries, I don't know what's going on at Fries, but more than a thousand percent increase at Fries. Just to give you some numbers associated with that. So this is for a two-month period. That's what staff pulled. For July and August 2022, there was a total of 26 riders going to Fries. In 2023, that was 331 riders going to Fries. Warrior Healing Center, 838% actual riders was eight to 75. Ross, 833, again, 33 to 308 at Ross. And Lenzner Belavista went up 675%, which was 16 to 124 riders. I will tell you that in terms of volume, so you see the percentages here, in terms of volume, the greatest increase was at Seventh and Quail Hollow. That stop was up 500 riders compared to the two months in the year prior. So almost 250 riders a month at Seventh and Quail Hollow, difference between 2022 and 2023. And I did note here, the results of the individual impacts are difficult to separate. I'm going to talk a little bit about more, those a little more later in the presentation, what were some of those individual impacts we were looking at? So the route changes. We continue to operate the consolidated scheduling. We haven't made any additional routing changes since the beginning of the year. So currently we are running the paratransit system, one fixed route, the orange route, and on-demand scheduling, which we've referred to right now as the pink route. There is no Fort Huachuca or weekend route and we have one hour less in the evenings than we used to have. I will tell you, the on-demand service has been very, very popular with riders. I think what we're seeing here, we're seeing a generational difference. The on-demand service resembles more with the newer generations coming up are used to an Uber or a Lyft. They like the convenience of the on-demand scheduling. That's just what staff is telling me that they're hearing back from the riders. They're also very much more efficient trips, but they are more costly to operate, an on-demand service versus a fixed route. So those have to be balanced. And I note here that the popularity has challenged available staffing. We put the on-demand in place. It was manageable. It continues to be manageable, but as popularity has increased and as we're seeing increased riders, we have to devote additional people to the on-demand service, which with the staffing continues to be a little bit challenging. So the fare free pilot program. So just kind of as a reminder, the driving factors for this, we were bringing in very limited fare revenues, about 600, or sorry, 63, not 600, $63,000 annually. We had direct expenses associated with collecting those fares and they were comparable to the fare revenues. So when we looked at actual costs associated with handling money, making deposits, issuing tickets to riders, refunds when needed, that came out to about $63,000 a year. But we also had indirect expenses associated with fares. They're difficult for the drivers to collect sometimes. People didn't want to pay fares. They didn't want to show their passes. So then you have drivers stopped at a, you know, bus stop, trying to communicate with riders, get them to pay their fare. That was a challenging situation and in a time when we were trying to attract and retain drivers, asking them to do that added quite a bit of stress to an already difficult job. There was a trend post-COVID towards cashless operations. A lot of people less comfortable handling cash. So we did look into a cashless system and the numbers there, the same numbers you saw six months ago. The annual maintenance and licensing fees, not including the initial setup costs, were more than what we were bringing in annually in revenue. So those numbers didn't pencil out 80,000 versus 63,000. The other factor, and Mr. Felix talked about it last time I was up here, is the FTA apportionment, the money we get in grants from the FTA is based partly on ridership. So we want ridership numbers to be as high as possible because that is where the majority of our funding comes from. There's a general fund subsidy as well, but obviously the more that we can bring in, in grant funding, that helps to minimize the general fund subsidy for Vista Transit. So the results of the fare free pilot program, there's been very positive reception from both public and staff. I get asked a lot what the status is and if the city was going to continue the program. And I told them, wait for the work session in September. It has been noted by staff that current conditions, especially with the on-demand service, would make it very difficult to collect fares because whereas before they were issuing, were spending their time issuing passes, collecting fares, they're now taking those on-demand phone calls and scheduling the on-demand and getting those routes running. So it would be difficult to do both of those at the same time. We'd have to make some decisions there if fares were to return. As noted, ridership is up, but the impacts are difficult to separate because we had a lot of things happen in a very short period of time. First off, in fiscal year 2020, which started July 2019, the city rolled out new routes. We went from half-hour loops to one-hour loops. And the reason for the, doing that was to focus more on single-seat rides. We knew that most of our ridership was coming from the West End and their primary destination was on the East Side of town, shopping destinations or medical care. So they were having longer rides than needed because they had to stop and transfer at the, at the transit center. There was no way for them to go directly to the destinations that they wanted to get to. So we focused more on single-seat rides and that's why those changes were made. We were looking forward to getting a year's worth of data to see the impact on ridership. Unfortunately, six months later, COVID hit and the news stories on what happened to transit agencies around the country during COVID were pretty well documented. In addition with that, there was a federal mask mandate for riding public transportation and that continued way beyond most mask mandates. I can tell you it was unpopular with the riders. It was unpopular with some of the drivers because it was several months after most mask mandates had expired and we were continuing to ask people to wear masks. Federal government was continuing to ask people to wear masks on public transportation. So that was a difficult time and staff had a difficult time enforcing that policy. As noted, staffing challenges and resulting route consolidations, we've had to make adjustments rather quickly. Fortunately, we have more stability now than we had a couple of months ago, but those certainly have impacted ridership at times. The on-demand service and then the fare free pilot program, the on-demand service and the fare free pilot program rolled out at the same time. So those are particularly difficult to separate out the impacts of those two because they happened at the same time. The on-demand was driven by the staffing levels and the fare free was being driven by the need to get ridership up and recognition of the limited revenue that transit was bringing in. So the fare free pilot program, we have some more information from the FTA than the last time I talked to you. So the FTA due to COVID, last figured apportionments, that's our subsidy that we get from them, from fiscal year 2019 data, so well before COVID. And it's, it's very good that they don't use COVID numbers because obviously the impacts of transit agencies around the country would be very significant. So that has been the case up through and including this fiscal year. However, the federal fiscal year 2024 FTA apportionment will be based on federal fiscal year 2022 data. So there is some surprise out there that they chose to go ahead and require agencies to start reporting now because you look at 2022, most, most municipalities were still dealing with COVID during that time and the after effects of COVID. We were certainly not running anywhere close to normal operations in federal fiscal year 2022. So the only consolation we have in this is everyone's in the same boat nationwide. Everyone will be reporting on fiscal year 2022 data and so we're, we're all going to be on equal footing. I noted here, the recent ridership increases, those were in city fiscal year 2023. So we will have to wait a whole nother year before we see those start to impact our apportionment. So we don't know yet what our fiscal year 2024 apportionment's going to be. Finance tells me that those numbers will be out in the next month or two. They'll give us kind of a preliminary look and then a final a couple of months later. But for fiscal year 23, our federal apportionment is a little over a million dollars. Again, based on 2019 ridership, that was 146,271 riders. Our fiscal year 2024 apportionment is to be determined. That's based on 70,000 riders. So a drop of about 50%. However, I did want to note that that drop is, that doesn't mean that we have 50% less passengers than we had in 2019. I spent some time digging into this one because it was bugging me a little bit. We, I mentioned the changes we made in fiscal year 2022 when we changed our, our loops to 60-minute loops. That was done to promote single-seat rides, which is a benefit to our customers. But it turns out, the federal government, they include transfers in passenger accounts, which I think, when I look at it, it's like, it's almost incentivizing inefficient operation. The more times you can get people to transfer, the more times you can count them. And I was confused as to why we did a routing system which would drop the number of transfers and thus the number of riders in fiscal year 20. So I put in a call to Mike Norman, who was our transit administrator at the time, and he was able to answer the question. So it turns out, in the intervening time, another change is the transportation infrastructure bill was renewed, happens every couple of years. The old formula that he was working under in fiscal year 2020 was based almost solely on population of the municipality. So ridership was not really a factor. When the transportation reauthorization bill came out, there was about five to seven different things that it is now based on. One of them is ridership, which includes transfers. He was surprised by this change as well and it is one factor. So I wouldn't say that you want to run as inefficient of a system as possible. You don't because there are other factors that capture that inefficiency and would impact the apportionment. But I just wanted to be clear, when you look at these numbers, part of it is a reduction in transfers, which is, I think, overall a good thing for our transit system. It just, they were not able to predict in 2020, 2019 actually, when we made the changes, that when the transportation reauthorization bill went through, they were going to drastically change the formula and how they counted riders. Okay, so future considerations. So first up would be a decision on whether or not to continue the fare free pilot program. In the city's budget this year, we do have a transit master plan update that will take a look at our routing system that we are running currently and recommend any changes to that, both fixed routes and on-demand. As I noted, there's positives and negatives to both. And then in, following that, we And then, following that, would be an evaluation of the city's transit fleet. The buses we run right now, the buses we have, they were based on a fixed route program. If you're running on-demand service, are those the most efficient vehicles to use? And if not, what should we be transitioning to instead? And then also staffing. That will continue to be a challenge, particularly in the part-time ranks. But again, we are seeing some increased stability there and I'm encouraged by that. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions? All right. Just off the top of your head, what is a typical on-demand waiting time? If somebody calls, hey, I'm at this stop number, whatever, come get me. What does that normally look like for a person versus, you know, waiting for the next bus to come and?
Well, and I think, I don't know off the top of my head what typical would be because it depends if there's a bus immediately in the area or if one's got to go to that area.
But they're not necessarily always just at the transit station?
Correct.
If they're out and about, then they'll just head that way?
Yeah. It would typically, typically be under thirty minutes for the on-demand. And where that ends up being key for some of the stops, like, for example, Cochise College was noted to me specifically as being a stop where we've seen additional interest. And I think the reasons for that is imagine a situation where you're in a class and your class gets out at nine oh five. But the bus route just happens to hit the Cochise College stop at nine o'clock and running hour-long loops, it won't be back till ten. So, that's, I think, where the on-demand has been advantageous for people, is filling in those gaps a little bit.
Okay. All right. I know you're, there's no way you're saying the federal government is skewing data. There's no way that's happening, right? For the skewing data to say more transit stops is what they're looking for, which is kind of ridiculous. But I'm glad you pointed that out because I don't think anybody wants a less efficient system. Even if federal government's basing their format one thing, they're basing their formula off of is, if the more transit, the more transfers you make, those, that's good because that's more numbers. That's ridiculous. But that sounds very federal government-ish to do that. So, I'm glad there's more factors that are included instead of that one because that's very inefficient. So, I don't know, the fleet, is it like, I don't know how efficient this would be looking forward and the cost effective and I'm sorry, are you thinking like electric bus, a little fifteen-passenger van? We plug in somewhere and then use that as the, instead of, you know, on-demand only thing or?
So, I think the primary consideration we're looking at is we're running buses right now. If you're doing on-demand service and you're picking up two or three people at a time, would a van be a better way to service those? The van's more fuel-efficient, whether that be gas or electric. It's going to be more efficient that way and also doesn't require CDL driver. Whereas our existing buses require CDL drivers. So, does that open a new opportunity for staffing to not just rely on CDL drivers? Because one thing I talked about last time was the challenges of hiring CDL drivers right now. They are very much in demand.
That was my, you, rather the next question I was going to ask was CDL-wise. I know that was six months ago, that was one of the biggest problems for everybody. But I think, based off ridership numbers, I mean, it kind of sounds like a smaller vehicle. If you have somebody that doesn't need a CDL right away, you don't have to put them through the training. Hey, you have a license, a valid license, you can go ahead and do this portion for us. And this other vehicle doesn't require a CDL, it seems like a much better way to do it.
Correct. And we do have a van right now that we use for that purpose, for people who are in training that they can fill some of those gaps.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. As of right now, how much are the taxpayers of Sierra Vista subsidizing this Vista Transit now that we've gone totally fare-free?
Well, Dave's not here. Generally, Councilman Johnson, our subsidy runs around the four-hundred-thousand-dollar range a year for a general fund subsidy.
Right. That was the figure I had in my head, but I wanted to confirm that. Additionally, has any studies been done regarding the income demographics of the ridership that are on these buses?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Johnson, I can't think of any studies that have been done on income demographics. Just what I hear from drivers, we are, especially in the post-COVID era, the people who are using public transit are the people who don't have another option. The ones we lost during COVID were the people who had another option. They had a personal vehicle that they could drive. They just were choosing not to do so, to use public transportation instead. The ones who stayed throughout COVID and are still present now are the ones who rely on the transit system.
I have another question, maybe Matt could answer this. Could we possibly be, in the future, using CDBG money to subsidize Vista Transit based on potential demographics of those that are in our ridership?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Johnson, it's my understanding that HUD prohibits the use of CDBG to subsidize general operations and whether that would be regarded as a general operation. I believe it will, but, and I'm not aware of any city using CDBG funds to subsidize transit.
Seems to me it might be worth research. What I'm trying to do is lower the burden from our budget and putting it on others because obviously, the federal government doesn't care. You know, I mean, we're doing our best to transport these people and now they're getting to the point where we're basically providing a Uber service. I'm somewhat troubled by that, that there's an expectation of, you know, that the government has to do everything for you at no cost. Because it does cost. So, that's why I've just asked those questions. I know, I know there's no good answer. I mean, transit is transit, it'll never make money. I know the city of Chicago has not gone fare-free. It costs two dollars and fifty cents to go from O'Hare Field to downtown Chicago right now and they're still losing money. But that's all I have to say. Thank you. Thank you, Sharon. I know it's a tough, it's a tough part of your entire portfolio, so to speak.
Mayor McCaw, Councilman Johnson, those are, those are good questions and one we've wrestled with the entire time we've had the transit system because there's always been a subsidy in that range about from the general fund for transit. So, and you're correct, transit systems do not make money. You have two services you provide where you're basically providing about half of the, of the cost of doing that. The other is the cove. So, and Laura's working to try to narrow those numbers down. But those are pretty much subsidized fifty percent, you know, by the taxpayers to operate them. I think in the transit study, it would be good to kind of get an idea of the ridership. I think anecdotally, based on, you know, what Sharon said and I just, you know, had discussion with somebody who used the transit system Sunday night at a dinner. But we're primarily serving low-income and disabled people, elderly people that essentially need the rides. Is the general public really taking advantage of the transit system? I don't have a sense that that's the case. But the people that are using it are people that absolutely need the ride. So, really, it's a policy decision on the part of you on the city council as to how much you want to subsidize, you know, that service for those people. But I think if we could include it in the study or try to get an idea, that might give you a better idea and more information to make those kinds of decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Fares did not help us really reduce the subsidy when we had fares.
All right. So, the next step is?
So, the short-term next step, we, when we, I presented six months ago. What we told the public was we were going to do a six-month pilot program. So, I'm here to you today to report the result and other considerations for Vista Transit. So, I guess the short-term question is, do we continue fare-free? And then also, I will be coming back when we have the transit master plan, providing you updates on the results of that effort. So, this won't be the last time you see me about transit.
Yes, ma'am.
Based on the previous numbers, it would be foolish for us to go back to fares. I mean, I don't like that idea at all, but if we're nearly breaking even, having to handle it and have personnel to count money and all this other nonsense, it makes no sense to me to not continue fare-free. But that's, that's just one councilperson's opinion.
It is an absolute oddity of the transit system that we would get more money to get more riders and give them free rides from the federal government than we would get in fare recovery.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. No, I mean, I agree the, there's no, it doesn't seem like there'd be, I agree, it wouldn't make sense to go back to fares. If anything, if you want to put like a little Venmo sticker and let people just donate if they want. Hey, it's not required. Tip your driver, you know, that is, right? You talk about Uber and Lyft, that's what everybody operates now on their phone and they just, where's your Venmo? Let me just scan it, you know, let me just send you a tip, whatever. There's no way, we're not going to make, other than that, people just, out of the heart, want to donate, right? Hey, thanks, we like your service, you know?
They would probably appreciate that. I'm not sure we can do it, but.
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't see why it would be illegal. Why not give it a try? If we get ten bucks, cool.
Who stole the tip jar?
That's why if you go Venmo, it's just, it's all electronic. It goes right to, you know, somewhere else. There's no counting the money every day and things like that. Stealing the tip jar. Well, thank you, ma'am.
I don't know if we're looking for more comments about, from council about, about this, but I do agree that I feel like it wouldn't be in our best interest to go back to fare at this point in time, based on the information that we were given before about the cost. And anytime, anytime people are involved in anything, things are complicated. And anytime money's involved with anything, things are complicated. People have money together, it gets more complicated. So, it seems like it would be more stress and more trouble than it would be worth to try to balance it out. So, it seems like that would be in our best interest and to, you know, revisit things in the future based off of, you know, whatever, whatever master plan update we have or any type of study that's done. So, I do agree that it would be, it would be a good to, course of action to continue as we're right now.
Thank you, ma'am. One last thing too, is just. I just want to focus on the positive things that we can think about when it comes to the transit, right? The backend, it's hard, there's nobody probably measured this, but obviously, people that ride are going to work hopefully or spending money, right? We get those tax dollars back that way. If all these people are going to Fry's, hopefully they're spending money at Fry's and that comes back to us anyway. People are out there instead of walking in the heat, right? There's not a medical call that has to go out for someone that has passed out from walking down the bypass instead they're, you know, they're on the bus. So, hopefully, all these things are, are positive things that are from people riding the bus for free. Like I said, it's probably hard and impossible to measure those things, but I would think that that's what's happening. So, there's got to be a positive spin to it on the backend that you can just think of. You know, anybody who rides a bus for whatever reason, the alternative is probably going to be a not, a much less far ideal situation, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah. Just one last thing, Sharon. You mentioned when we were collecting fares, that drivers would have a hard time with some, some of the ridership. Since we've gone fare-free, do you have any anecdotal evidence from your drivers regarding the attitude of those on the, on the public transit?
Yes, sir. It's a great question. It's been much easier on the drivers and they really appreciate it because bottom line is, you know, you have someone that climbs on your bus that you know is living on the margins and is having a difficult time. But you got to tell them they need to pay their fare because you have other people on the bus that paid their fare to get on that bus. How do you let this person get on for free? And our drivers, they are skilled in working with our transit population. They know the names of these people, they know their stories. And to have to deny somebody a ride based on inability to pay is a very difficult situation for them. So, they, each time this happened, they had to choose what they're going to do in this situation. And that's, that's difficult.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Go to item number Delta, Council Executive Report.
Thank you, Mayor McCaw, members of the council. You know, today, I'll let Chief Heiser, you know, if you ask him, you know, talk about maybe some of the numbers related to the border issues that we're facing right now. But I want to focus a little bit on some of the things that were, are happening there. Couple of weekends ago, the processing center in Pima County, who's been taking the drop-offs at the Safeway in Naco, reached capacity and as such, there was no bus rides available for individuals to be taken to Pima County. That ended up in a sheltering situation that developed with the city of Bisbee and Douglas. And we're talking women, small children and infants being processed at the Naco Center after being taken over from Aho. So, that's, that's the situation that developed. The county had some, some, you know, issues with, you know, how all that was happening, trying to put that together, the shelters and that kind of thing. And reached out at the mayor manager's luncheon for the other communities to perhaps look at ways that we might be able to help out Douglas and Bisbee if the situation worsened. Of course, we can do that if we have a facility available. And they mentioned the potential use of the old juvenile detention facility across from the hospital as a site, which I think would be a good one. You know, none of that has been worked out, but Victoria was sent a list of items that they needed, you know, food, clothing, you know, different things required just for basic human existence. And, and then asked maybe if we could get our social service agencies, faith-based organizations, you know, and others maybe to help out. So, as of right now, the situation has not worsened to the point where we have to, you know, be asked to stand up a shelter, although that, the potential exists pretty much on a daily basis because there's no way to project what's going to happen or how many people could end up in this situation. It's a terrible situation. Doesn't seem like anybody on up higher levels of government than us care about what happens to these people. But it could end up being a public safety problem if people start wandering around on the streets. You know, they have to eat. So, you know, so, you know, I'd rather err on the side of humanitarian assistance. Of course, if that situation does develop, then what's the end game? You know, our buses going to come, you know, is the shelter going to be full in Pima? How long do we have to keep these people who transports them? If the state can't transport them, a lot of, a lot of questions out there, you know, with regards to this. So, right now, knock on wood, we're not being asked to do that. But we are going out and asking folks for food donations and clothing or other necessities, toiletries, you know, that kind of thing that, that folks might need. Some, you know, right now, that could be taken to Bisbee or Douglas to assist them. But certainly, if we need to stand up a shelter here, then certainly we'll be asking for the generosity of our populace as well to, to try and assist in that. In the meantime, we continue to try to work with our federal and state elected officials to see if there's any assistance forthcoming. Not really with much success so far, but nonetheless, that's the situation that's out there that we're dealing with and has taken up quite a bit of our time. So, I really just want to put a focus on that, let the public know what's going on right now, you know, with that situation. And I don't know if we've seen a lot of that impact on the streets yet. You know, maybe Chief, you could, you could chime in on that.
Sure. Mayor, members of council, we've been just monitoring the impacts on the street releases on the city of Sierra Vista. So far, the impacts have been, have been nominal. Then just not a lot of people coming into Sierra Vista from these street releases. Migrants are just hanging out with nowhere to go. We're not seeing that. We do have encountered them a couple of times. Their, their goal isn't, they didn't, they didn't travel all this way to come to Sierra Vista. They're still moving further north. So, they're looking for a ride or they're waiting for a ride to pick them up or waiting for a bus. We're just not seeing a big impact yet. We're just continuing to monitor it. What is continuing to be steady are the fare yields and the pursuits for the illegal smuggling that is still going on. So, that's actually been on our radar. So that's actually been on our radar as well.
Questions, comments?
So at any rate, that's what I wanted to let you know about. Obviously, staff is here and you have the executive report before you. And feel free to ask us any questions that you might have.
I appreciate you guys doing the work to look into that possibility if need be. Because I know that's a, that was a big ask that they had of us, the county asked. You know, so I'm glad there was, obviously, some staff work involved there. So whoever was involved, appreciate you thinking that because it's, the bottom line, all politics aside, it's just a, it's a humanitarian thing where you're, you know, I hate to see anybody, especially kids, just dumped out somewhere. So, yeah, it's, if there's a, it's good to know there's a possibility, if we need it, that there's even a location thought of. And I'm sure at that point, like you said, faith-based organizations or, you know, volunteers, which have reached out to some of us already, asking what they can do, you know, because some people thought it was already happening in our town. For some reason, it's not. But hopefully, we've cleared up that misinformation. But there's people out there that do want to help and they're kind of just standing by.
Just like Councilman Rockrada said, we put out a, a blurb to all the pastors in town. Had a great response. People are ready to react. Already, they are giving to Salvation Army, taking it down to Douglas. So we have a, we have a generous population, generous, generous town. Just thank, thank them for their quick reaction and looking forward to more collaboration on this effort. Okay. Report on recent trips, meetings and future meetings. So Thursday, I have to go up to...
No other questions?
Oh, no other, I'm sorry. No other questions?
No.
You're clear.
All right, thanks.
Report on recent trips, meetings and future meetings.
We have the, we have the recent groundbreaking of...
Oh, yeah, yesterday.
Yeah, the groundbreaking of the training.
College.
The Cochise College Training.
The letter.
The one yesterday.
Yeah, it's the Mayor McCaw, it's the groundbreaking of the new indoor firearms range.
Indoor firearms range.
Yeah. Along those lines too, the, the driving track is being, is a, a big success. Not only in terms of, not only in terms of training. Well, we'll get to that. But, you know, not only in terms of, you know, public safety training, but Laura's now able to schedule, you know, events and, you know, such as the car clubs and those kind of things. Of course, no good deed goes unpunished, so there is, you know, we are fielding some complaints regarding noise, et cetera, which I find a little bit odd because the fire station is there and you guys run sirens, sirens, I think, Chief, when you, when you need to. And of course, you have school buses and a lot of traffic, you know, in that area with, you know, associated with the school and all the things that go around there. So we've taken some steps to, to mitigate people trying to get on at night and, and doing their thing with their cars. So putting boulders and those kind of things around. We'll look at, you know, sound mitigation if we need to in the future and then warning people in the area that there will be training with, with sirens, you know. But obviously, we've been doing this at the airfield, which isn't an optimal place, but a good place for noise. And although we're in a kind of an out-of-the-way place, it is relatively close to Montebello. So, so we're monitoring that and responding to those as need be. So, but other than that, it's, it's working great.
The other recent trips. Have a trip scheduled for Thursday, won't be here, up in Phoenix with the consulate of Mexico, resigning the, well, signing the agreement for sister cities. The consulate had, had communicated with the NBA that they didn't have on file the SISCI city agreement that signed it back in 1979 for Sierra Vista and Cananea. So we're going to re-sign that, but we have the document, but they wanted a signature, so...
Chuck probably has it his email somewhere.
Probably. That's even before my time. I, I'm sure the council had to approve that back in 1979.
So no future, so future discussion. Ma'am?
Thank you, Mayor McCaw. Two things I'm tracking right now, you have your final strategic plan report. We had a number of things scheduled for this meeting, so it's going to be on, on your next meeting. And then your implementation plan for your new strategic plan as well are both upcoming.
Yes, sir.
Yes. As far as our strategic planning, I would call an item mark 14.1 with respect to perhaps investigating and forming a municipal court. Since we're going to be talking about that, I'd like to know what progress has been made regarding the research on it, because we've heard nothing. That goes back to the beginning of this year, so I'd like to see some action on that particular item.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any other comments, questions?
We'll, we'll make sure Mayor Protem is up to speed for Thursday.
With that, we are dismissed.